All right, good evening. I'd like to call the September 10th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So I do not have any announcements this evening. Any of you guys?
I do not.
Sam, Mike, no? All right, seeing as none. Is there anyone here for anything not currently on our agenda?
Not be you.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hi.
Name is Dick Skinner with the Sunshine Club of the Douglas Senior Center, past Senior Center. I was here once before and with Suzanne's guidance and information, they get me out of several traps. And I'm now back again. I have... So I'm here tonight to talk about the Oktoberfest. The senior group has added a Friday night event. And it's a dinner, dance, little fun. It's intended as a fundraiser for the Sunshine Club.
Ooh. I come for the meal.
Meal should be very good.
You know dessert. Strudel?
Strudel. You don't see that often.
Are you asking for Vice Chairman Cortez to show up in Lederhosen or anything? We can arrange that.
That would be good.
Why would you ruin a perfectly good gathering?
Do we need to take a vote?
That would be the fun of it.
Not fun for me.
So the second item on my agenda is to request permission to put signs on town property. And the signs we're looking at, Town Hall, Fire Station, intersection of Gilboa and North Street, which may or may not be town property. The island at the intersection of 16 and West Street and the transfer station. So we'd like permission to put signs there.
Any issues from either one of the chiefs?
This is a fundraiser event for the Senior Center, correct?
Correct.
Indirectly to the Sunshine Club, which makes a lot of the social center activities possible, right?
And the two of them work together.
Yeah.
Any issues from the chairman of Oktoberfest?
It was a great idea to me.
Sunshine Club's a nonprofit, correct?
Correct.
I believe so, yeah.
Yep. Good.
So we're okay putting the signs up?
No, no issues. Do we need to vote, do you think? Yeah. I would move that we allow the Sunshine Club to put up signs on town property for their Oktoberfest to be celebrated Friday night, October 4th of this year.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does anybody want to make a motion for Cortez and Lederhosen to help with advertising?
Would not be a good idea.
So as a final thought, we hope that you and your dancing partner will show and give us some support. It's not inexpensive, but it's going to be a good meal, and we'll be dancing, and we'll have a few other fun events, including Lederhosen for someone else, not necessarily for you having fun. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We're going for the Lederhosen.
You sure you don't want to do that, Dave?
No, I'm pretty sure.
So it brings us to our first agenda item. Is there anything else that's not currently on the agenda?
No.
Okay, so moving on. Road use for the mid-state massive ultra trail and possible votes.
And Andy Marx is here to talk to you about that.
My wife, Meredith.
Hi, Meredith.
Are you participating in this?
I don't know anything about it.
All right.
It starts in New Hampshire and ends in Douglas, so I'm not going to know. I'm going to pass on that one.
Dave?
Well, there's a 30-mile event starting in Charlton that you can do.
I'm going to actually, this was an email that he received yesterday, so I'm going to send, pass that around. That came after the agenda went out.
Is that what I said?
I'm sorry. Yes. But they did get all the other stuff, too, so, everything.
There's a long race.
Good evening. Yeah, absolutely.
So tell us a little bit about the event.
The event is 100-mile ultra marathon, starting in New Ipswich, New Hampshire, running along the mid-state trail, all the way ending in Douglas State Park. We've got permission from Department of Conservation Recreation to be using all the parks along the way. And also finishing, we've gotten, we've submitted our certificate of insurance for the town of Douglas and gotten permission from all the abutting towns on the course. We have significant safety backups, like 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, full safety vests, runners are lit. Whenever they're on the roads, they'll be lit. We have EMTs at one of 16 aid stations, at all 16 aid stations, I should say.
We have EMTs at every aid station.
Yeah, every aid station.
There are 16 of those.
Yeah. Yeah, we're excited for the event, and we have about 100 people who are currently registered during the entire event. Breaks down to about 10 runners per hour through each town, we're assuming so.
Yeah, because the event is such a long distance. You won't get a massive amount of people at one time. You'll just see runners kind of trickling by. And for the town of Douglas, I think you said it's three-quarters of a mile on a road.
Yeah, we're on, what, northwest Maine for about three-quarters of a mile before turning onto the trail. Then we cross Webster, and then we cross southwest Maine.
And the fire chief, police chief, and highway superintendent have no concerns.
Works for me.
Great.
I think I'd have to start now if I was going to try that race, maybe.
It's in two weeks, so good luck.
Yeah, if I did start now and somebody was willing to drive me, I might be able to.
I'll make a motion that we approve the road use plan for the mid-state massive ultra trail race for this year.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A little bit works out well.
Do you need them to sign, or do you need a letter, or you're just going to go for it?
Maybe just, we could pop up with an email that approval's been given.
Yep, I'll send you. Yep, all right. Will do.
What would you expect the winning time to be?
The fastest known time is about 23 hours right now.
Is it really?
That's self-supported, that a friend of mine did on his own with a couple friends. We're hoping that with support, we could see like a 20-hour winning time.
By my, okay.
Yeah, 20 hours. Yeah.
Not from the chairman, but from someone else.
Yeah, always looking for volunteers, too, so I can follow up with that if you guys want to come.
So Dave and I will run out of time.
I don't think I've ever done anything for 20 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Have a good night.
Thanks so much.
Okay. So brings us to our second. Approve a special one-day beer and wine permit for Oktoberfest and possible votes.
This is the annual application from Oktoberfest Committee for a beer and wine tent behind the Ian Jenk store. All abutters have been notified. The event is October 5th, 9:30 to 4:00 PM. We have submitted the paperwork and fee to Maya for the liquor liability. There have been no issues from anyone. It's here for your approval.
And I gotta say, it was a, when we first did it, that's been a great event, a great addition to Oktoberfest. You got any new stuff coming up this year, too, Tony?
It's all top secret until Oktoberfest?
Right. Anybody want to make a motion on this one?
Make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license for Oktoberfest.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to wait until signed these afterwards for the executive session? All right.
Okay. Next is to approve order of taking for Darling Way and possible votes.
Hi. How are you? Good, you? Good.
Can I get your name?
Ronald Odette.
All right, so you're here to talk about the order of taking for Darling Way?
Yep. I own it. And we had a deal quite a while ago about taking that. Because actually what happened was, I tried to get that approved, the whole project, years ago, before Bill Kundoff was here, Buff Therrien was here, and it never went anywhere. Project was all set, Puff was happy with it. Tried to get it to go through, never went anywhere. So now that little piece sat there forever, and then all of a sudden I get a $6,000 tax bill on it. And I talked to, well, actually my attorney, talked to Attorney Haldeman. We had a deal. I would give it, but I wouldn't pay any taxes on anything. And now, and I was short at $6,000. I couldn't believe it. Because we had the agreement, it was all on paper, everybody knew it. Bill Kundoff knew it. Town administrator, he knew it. And everybody just said, oh, well, the tax lady, she overrules the whole Town Hall, and she took the money. Well, that's not what happened. It was Attorney Haldeman dealt something with her and said, take the money. It's not what the agreement was. And I had no problem. I would have given you whatever you wanted. I've done it in the past over the years, when Puff asked me for stuff. The cemetery, I went over there, screened all the wounds, spread it, got it all going, and I didn't. And all I wanted was my bond money back. And the town actually spent probably a good $1,500 out of that bond money. And when we had the bank card, the town was on it and I was on it. I was told, nobody can do anything without both parties. Next thing I know, the town is taking money out of it, switched it over to just the town, and I don't know how that could have happened. Because I was on that bankbook.
How long ago was this?
This, how long ago was that?
The bankbook? Oh, Christ, it must have been 20 years ago.
Well before any of us.
Right.
You said you had an agreement with the town in writing?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I can bring the paperwork, but I can get it and give it to you.
I think there's different versions of the story. The project was never finished, right?
It was finished.
Who accepted it? The town didn't accept?
No, and that's the thing, the town didn't accept.
The town didn't accept?
I went for it to get accepted.
And whether Buff did it or didn't? Mr. Kundoff wasn't going to sign off on it. There was work, additional work that needed to be done, so...
On Darling Way?
The project is over, right?
Oh, yeah.
You owe the town taxes. The town took the taxes from the surety and released the remainder of the surety to you, right?
But that's, that's not what the agreement was.
But you are also currently operating with a building permit in town, correct?
Yeah.
If you owed the town taxes, we wouldn't have given you that building permit. So, you know, at the end of the day, when you do business with the town, and you post surety, or you post other financial assets as collateral, and if you don't pay the taxes that are due, the tax collector has broad sweeping authority to collect those taxes. We carry them as accounts receivable on our balance sheet, and if we don't collect them, our credit rating is hurt. So there was a legal method for the tax collector of the town of Douglas to seize those funds to satisfy your tax bill. In the grand scheme of things, doing you a favor, because now you're able to operate your business and get building permits and continue to move on.
Absolutely. But I wanted it taken way before that, even when we did Spring Meadow.
I have no doubt that you may have gone back and forth with lots of people, but we brought this to a conclusion. You know?
It's not right.
It is right.
It's not.
When people owe taxes, the tax collector will collect.
I owe taxes, but the thing is, I shouldn't have owed taxes. And when we had Spring Meadow, the town said, okay, we want this and that done, and make a little more of a crown in the road, and we did all that, it still didn't take it. And it was all up and ready to go for, you know, the town accepting the road.
To remind you of what we discussed, I believe we'd had this discussion in my office.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It is the responsibility of a private business to prosecute your business to conclusion. If the town doesn't accept your road, and you have surety sitting there, who needs to take the initiative there? The business person needs to take the initiative. Bring your matters to a conclusion, come to this forum, and get people motivated. I've been here two years, the case was resolved as soon as I heard about it, because that was what we needed to do. This has languished on for the latter part of a couple of decades, and it needs to be finished, done.
No, I agree with you, but I would have liked to have finished it 20 years ago.
I'm not going to disagree with you there, but again...
I wouldn't owe that tax money, right? I wouldn't owe that tax money.
Again, I look to you as the private business person...
And nobody wanted to do anything with it.
To resolve it.
And when we went before the attorneys, it was agreed on, I was getting the money, I was donating it to the town. And that was yes and okay. Then we get to the end, hm, am I giving it to you? The tax, the tax lady said she can take the money, overrule everybody in the town. I'm sorry, I just don't think it's right, and it was, I worked really hard over there.
I guess I, I understand and empathize with where you're at, and I mean, it was 20 years ago, and, geez, I was still in my twenties, I probably wouldn't have had the slightest idea where Douglas was at that point in time. I think to Matt's point, I think what we want to do is move on and get this closed, have this become an accepted road, is that part of the...
But it's going to be town property, yeah.
Yes, so in essence, it took 20 years to conclude where you wanted to be. I get your point, it should have been done 20 years ago. Part of the taking, I don't believe there's any additional monies changing hands in any direction.
No, you took it all.
So just quick questions, just from my knowledge. If this went to town meeting, and town meeting said, no, we don't want this street?
It didn't go to town meeting.
Didn't go to town meeting.
Didn't go to town meeting.
It never made it that far.
No, but if it did, and the town said no, what happens?
Well, at that point, the town would have to have a reason not to take it, so theoretically, not in Mr. Darling's case, but just in the general matter, if the road isn't finished, the town would take the surety and finish the work.
Yeah.
And the builder would receive whatever was posted for surety and remained after the work was completed.
But the road was finished 100%, sidewalks, paving...
Right, but you retained ownership on a taxable piece of real property.
I just...
You had to have known that...
No, no, the thing is, with the attorneys, my attorney, the town's attorney, they agreed I would get that money.
And you have that documentation in writing, signed off by the town administrator?
Yes, I can get it from my attorney. It was, it was in writing that I would get. I'd give it, but no taxes. And it's not like it's $20, it's $6,000. And that money I had to let sit for years. And I just thought it was, I'm not asking, I'm not being, I don't think, unrealistic. We had the agreement, if the...
I understand that you had an agreement, but we couldn't take any action based on the agreement without looking at it. I mean, you knew we had this meeting tonight, I'm wondering why we don't have copies of the agreement. If we're going to rely on that to make a decision, it's only fair to allow us to read it.
I'll bring them in, but the town has those copies and the paperwork.
Do we want to table this to look at the agreement? Do we want to move forward on this and look at that as a side buyer issue? I'm looking at you, because you're an attorney.
Yeah, I'm not the town's attorney, so I can't, I can't give you legal advice.
No.
I know the town would like to have the $6,000, I'd like to have the $6,000. And that's what we agreed on.
Let me ask Mr. Wojcicki. What is the status of the surety now?
The surety's been closed, so the town took the taxes, what was remained was cutting a check to Mr. Odette.
Okay, and no taxes on the road as of this time?
No, that cleared the bill.
That cleared the bill.
To allow this to go forward without a balance.
And Mr. Odette got the remainder of the surety?
Yeah.
Attorney Haldeman would have all those records, any of us.
I just have a hard time thinking of something that was 20-plus years ago.
Well, you know, I was trying for it, and then we went for Spring Meadow going in, the whole subdivision, and that's when the town said, okay. I think Bill Kundoff was in there, okay, we want more of a crown, we want this fixed, that fixed. We did all of that, and then it sat. Sat for a couple of years, all of a sudden the town took it, accepted it as a town road. And if you go in there, it doesn't matter what, you know, I went in 17 years ago when Buff Therrien was around. He signed off, he was happy with everything.
So, but when was the, if you say there was an agreement, when was it made?
The agreement? I don't know, it was, it was a while ago. I don't think a year, what, with Puff?
No, this agreement you say you had with the town?
I don't know the exact date.
If there's a written agreement between the town executed by the town's attorney and your attorney to take the property, do you know why the agreement was never executed?
It was all set up. I was going to see the money, the town was taking, I was giving it to the town, I was more than happy.
Right, in exchange for no taxes, I understand that position. I just wonder if there was such an agreement written, why was it never executed? If the town and your attorney on your behalf executed this agreement, why was it never carried out, do you know?
I think where we are, in my recollection, if you want me to, I can go back to my computer, I think this was an email exchange between the attorneys, that the tax collector got wind of and said, wait a minute, and that's when the action was taken.
So this never came from the Board of Selectmen?
The thing is, I don't really think my office has the authority to do that, to execute such an agreement. It would have been brought either to the Board of Selectmen or to Town Meeting. It's an interest in real property, I can't do that stuff. Unless I'm authorized by the Board.
Ahead of time, right.
Ahead of time.
That's not the wind I got. I was told Attorney Haldeman went to the tax collector and said, here, you can take this money.
I think that would be outside of their purview.
Right, I was just going to say that, it wouldn't happen that way. It would have to come from one of two authorities, repeating what Mr. Wojcicki just said, either this board, as it was constituted 20 years ago whenever this happened, or Town Meeting. I don't believe either the tax collector nor the town administrator has the authority to enter into an agreement to say, we'll take the property and we'll forego the taxes. It would have to come either here or the Town Meeting, or both. And the bad news is that if there was such an agreement, and it didn't go to either one of those boards, there was a good argument that the agreement would be invalid.
No, I just, I'd like it to be over. I was more than willing to let it go.
Let me ask you this. What are you seeking? What do you want to happen?
The agreement we had was, I was getting all my bond money back.
All of the surety?
Yeah, and I was short at $6,000.
So you're looking for $6,000 back?
That's what we talked about.
I don't know if there's any way we can lawfully do that.
No, I mean, you had a valid tax levy on your property, and the town took the money in satisfaction of the levy. We're not going to disgorge the money.
Right.
I'm sorry, that's a mis...
I don't think we have the authorities. I think where the issue falls into is that there was, the assumption made between attorneys and this gentleman, that there was a deal in place by people that didn't have the authority to make that deal with you. And as much as I feel badly about your situation, I mean, it's pretty clear-cut how town government works, like, we didn't want to give you...
Why do you have a town council?
We have a town council to advise us on mass general law in municipalities.
You see, and where that happened, I dealt with you.
But if I could, to further on that, we have a town council to advise us? He can't act on anything without our authority.
Right.
So if he did that, he went rogue on you, and I apologize, but I can assure you, our current town council would never enter into an agreement with somebody without, A, going through the proper channels and bringing it through the correct legislative body. And as much as I empathize with where you're at, I can't pay for the sins of a board that sat here 20 years ago. And all I can do is say...
That part didn't happen 20 years ago. This probably happened maybe about, not even a year ago.
That, I will call you on and say there is no way, because I was sitting on this board as chairman, and it never came here.
It didn't come here, but it went through the attorneys. And that was the agreement.
I think what the chairman's saying, the attorney, we're not bound by, if it did happen that way, I have no idea whether it did or didn't. If it did happen that way, the attorney's actions wouldn't bind us. If your attorney went out behind your back and sold your house and your car, and you didn't give the authorization to do that, you're not bound by that. Neither are we bound by the actions, if it did happen that way, I believe, my personal opinion, by the actions of an attorney who did something that was outside of his scope of authority.
I don't ever think it got to that point, I think my recollection is correct here.
And it makes sense.
You know, it was going to come to you or be on the warrant with the rest of the Darling Way issues, and the tax collector did her job, which was, I've identified a source of funds, and I've also identified an unpaid tax bill. I have the legal authority to seize those funds. So the agreement was never executed, Mr. Odette, because it didn't get to that point. On our watch here, we won't let this happen, we won't let somebody cash out surety if they owe the town taxes. Just, it won't happen, because all the other builders in town who work on projects pay the taxes, they post their sureties, they complete the work, they either get all their surety back, a lot of them don't. The town ends up doing work and taking it out of their surety, but it would be profoundly unfair to everyone who follows the rules to now disgorges $6,000 because you were under an oppression. That document was never executed, and the funds were intercepted lawfully because they needed to be. Because you weren't forthcoming with the money for the property. Our only recourse would have been to take the property and tax, which puts us right back to where we are now, taking it through eminent domain after cashing out your surety, taking your past due taxes out of it.
Okay, I've got a question. When I had the full bond there, and I had the bankbook, town had the bankbook, my name got bumped off, town had the money, they started spending it. What gave the town the right to do that?
Well, I wasn't here then, but I'm going to tell you what...
See, that's what happens.
But I'm going to tell you what happens, though.
You were here, and hell...
Was your business liquid, and were you still active on the project? Because if there were attempts made to reach you, I can imagine how this would happen, and you were unavailable or unwilling or whatever to do the work, then the town would have taken the surety and done the work.
The work was done.
If you did the work and didn't tell the town, and we didn't have a record of it, then we went and did the same work twice.
I went through Buff Therrien, signed off, we were all set, we were going forward.
How long has Buff been passed away?
I don't, I never met Buff Therrien, I don't know.
Several years, more than seven, I guess.
About, yeah. Ten?
Ten? And then...
It's been 10 years already?
And how long ago was Puff the highway super?
Shortly before he passed.
So...
All right, I just don't understand how it, the town can take my money, take me off the bankbook, and go in... me off the bankbook, and go in, and you have town council handling this with my attorney, and last second, that lady gets it, she got wind of it. How in the hell did she get wind of it that this was going through?
Please pardon my, and I'm certainly not trying to sound flippant, but the only way I'm gonna be able to get an answer for you on that question is to hold a seance and try and somehow communicate with Buff in the afterlife. And I, I don't have a rational answer for you as to how the town managed to do whatever it is that they did 10 years ago. What I am doing is trying to bring this situation that you have to a conclusion.
Yeah, what?
And, and I mean, that's kinda where we're at.
It is concluded. Only the last formality here is the order of taking. It, it's not hard to imagine, the tax collector is sort of the final sieve that we push the sauce through. You know, if you're gonna get a permit, if you're gonna have a liquor license, if you're going to cash out surety, the tax collector's always involved at the, at the final analysis to make sure that you don't owe the town anything.
Was she involved when the town took my $1,500 out of it?
If, if the town took that money, it was because there was a condition of surety that wasn't met, and it needed to spend that money to meet those conditions. I think we're kinda rehashing a lot of things here. The project didn't, didn't, didn't finish. There was a past due tax bill, the tax collector did her lawful duty, which was to collect the taxes on the behalf of the town, and.
Let me see, I'm not gonna win.
Well, all I can say is that I'm, I'm sorry for what had happened with passports, and it's kinda outside of my control. The only thing that's sitting in front of me is that I have an order of taking that either needs to be executed or needs to be pushed to a later meeting. I don't see any merit in pushing it to a later meeting, because I don't know what's gonna change between now and then, other than a, an email exchange between attorneys that didn't have the authority to enter into an agreement in the first place.
No, I think actually with my attorney, I had signed those agreements. And it was full understanding.
So, I mean, your attorney drew up a contract, you signed off on the contract, but the town never entered into the contract, because the authority that would do that would be us, and then it would be town meeting.
You can't get around that. That's one of the issues that I, I think is a blockade right in the way of what the gentleman's seeking. It would have to be us or town meeting, and if it had happened, certainly a year ago, we were all, we were all here, and we were all at town meeting. So, I think we can all be pretty certain that didn't happen. 20 years ago, none of us were here, but to your knowledge, Mr. Town Administrator, there is no written contract to do what the gentleman is suggesting, right?
No, I mean, I think his recollection is correct. I think, is your attorney named Faith?
Yeah, Faith Lane.
Faith Lane drew up these documents, they were sent back to the town, and before they were executed or brought to any authority for execution, the taxes were taken from the surety. The one thing, we do have authority to cash out surety, that is part of the day-to-day operations of the town. Collection of the taxes, release of surety.
So, in essence, what happened there is we exercised what we should be doing, in taking the taxes that were owed via surety, which means that entering into any kind of agreement at that point would be null and void. Like, there's no purpose in us doing it.
You didn't have a meeting in the minds. You signed the documents, but we didn't.
Yeah.
That's, that's assessment, I think.
You should get yourself straight with the town council, because he can't put something together like this and deal with my attorney, and everybody knew it, Bill Kondof knew it. That's what we were doing. In the last second, six grand's gone, how would, how would you feel?
I would be.
You hire the town council for this. If that was the case, it had to come here, he should've brought it here.
I would be frustrated, but at the end of the day, I would say it fell outside of a process, and no contract or agreement was made by the powers that are allowed to execute it, and the town did what it's responsible to do. It collected taxes.
Yeah, because it doesn't sound like it fell outside of the process. It sounded like the tax collector did exactly what you mandated to do.
If I didn't give it to the, the town, how did the tax collector all of a sudden grab the money?
Well, the tax collector would usually go through audits, look through and see what's for outstanding taxes, looking to see if there's an assurity against the property and take it.
$1,500, you could just say, I asked where the $1,500 went. Nobody could give me an answer. Well, we hit, and I said, how did I get bumped off? The bankbook. Oh, well, the town wanted to change that, so they changed it. Well, hell, I was on the bankbook.
We can't walk in and just change a bank account.
No, I wouldn't think that.
Well, you did, you did, believe me.
I'd like to know what bank would, one party on a two-party account.
You were in the Bank of Savings, right here, when it was, I forgot what her name was, Kathy, she was, she's been gone for a while. I went down with her, we both went in, we both signed it. She said, nobody can do anything. Both parties have to do it.
Right. When I came into. Something you should bring up with the bank, I can tell you that.
Oh, see, I gotta, never mind, you guys can take it. I'm not gonna win, and it's gonna go from this person to the other person. Have a good night.
You too, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we issue an order of taking of Darling Way.
Anybody second?
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna make a motion for a seance, you know? All right.
Well, now Donna Sunshine's here to pick us right back up.
Come on up, Donna.
Okay.
You and the nose.
Nose first.
Be serious now.
That's a standard issue at Oxbridge Town Hall nowadays.
Ooh. Wow. Come on, Wojcicki, come here. Right there.
Sorry.
Come on up.
It was right over the plate, there was no arc, it was just coming, I saw the laces, Tim.
All right, I have worked for the Oxbridge Town Hall for 10 years, and I'm very proud to work there.
Thank you, Phoebe Saros.
You're welcome. So, thank you guys for allowing me to come here, and Suzanne, I appreciate it. So, I just wanted to let you know, thank you very much for all of your assistance. I wanted to thank Mr. Cortez for taking on some things for me, and I wanted to give him a shirt, actually, to say thank you.
It's not Lederhosen, is it?
It is.
It's not a nose, is it?
No, but it's an extra.
Does he get a nose?
I will, I will bring him a nose at our next meeting.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. That's my, like, on the back, that's my life anyway.
That's pretty, yeah. So, and it has our sponsors right on there, too?
Excellent.
That help us out.
You, I expect to see you, like, donning that shirt at the next Selectman's meeting.
I think there's been enough discussion of what I wear for this meeting.
I have a special thank you that I'd like to give to our police chief. He was an amazing gentleman, and he actually helped us out tremendously, and he was in the dunk tank, so thank you very much. This is for you, sir. You're very appreciated. You're gonna get more people to go, come in the dunk tank for next year?
I cannot imagine anyone would want to dunk our police chief.
Believe me, I got wet.
No, no, I, I.
I'm shaking to get all the water out of the weapon afterwards.
So, was Kent there to offer sprinkling for you, too, or, no?
No, it was okay. That's okay. So, we've raised over $5,000 so far to date, and we're still accepting any donations, if anyone would like to give anything more. So, but I appreciate everybody helping.
Where's the money going?
The virtual giving tree and the VFW, and we also would like to give some money back to Recreation Commission. So, I hadn't mentioned that.
It's to the, Dave has Lederhosen.
I, I don't know what your needs are, but, you know, we would like to give some back. And then, we're in full force to plan it for next year. I am a single chair for next year, but that's okay. I can, think I can handle it. And with the assistance from Mr. Cortez, I'm sure I'll be, he'll be helping me with some things, so.
He's doing it for the t-shirts.
He's doing it for the t-shirt, yes, yeah, well, you know. So, so that's it, so, you know. I hope it goes well for next year, too.
Well, Donna, thank you very much for hosting the event and for all your hard work. You're appreciated.
It was a lot of fun.
Thank you.
I had a blast. Thanks, guys.
And I think that they should put you in for a hazardous duty ribbon for working at the Oxbridge Town Hall, just saying.
I, oh, and I don't wanna let you know that.
Almost done.
I, I did go into the dunk tank, and I had several people come up to dunk me, including one of his officers, too, so.
I'm, I'm sure you discipline them, right?
It was, it was funny. There were a lot of people that came. We're gonna shorten the hours next year, and we're gonna change the date to make it easier, so we can have Tim Bone and Anne come to the, to the dunk tank.
You will raise a lot of money if I go into a dunk tank, believe me.
From me?
We raised a lot of money with Chris Villadue going in there, and Luke McNeil. So, we raised a lot of money for the both of them going in.
I'm gonna try and behave right now, I'm just.
Good stuff.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, nice work.
Thanks.
All right, so we have the Beagle Club change in officers reconsideration and possible votes?
Yes. You had already approved the change of officers. This was not part of the checklist. Every once in a while, they do ask for a little bit of extra information, so they did send this one back. ABCC is who I'm referring to. ABCC, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, sent it back, return no action, because they did wanna get a query on all new officers. They did only have one new officer. I do have that paperwork for her to allow them to do the query, and I will be resubmitting it, but you have to re-vote, and I have to send it in with your signature.
I am a member, so I'm not gonna make the motion.
All right. Anyone?
Do we have names, or we're just approving it?
Just approving it.
You're just appro, all she's, you already had the names?
Yeah.
And it's just that one person is a new member, a new board member, so the ABCC wants to do a query on them.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
I again, will make a motion to approve the change in offices for the Beagle Club with the new member being required to complete a query check.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll have you sign that later also.
All right. We have a proclamation request from the Natchog River Young Marines Program and possible votes. And I'm assuming he, the young marine did not?
He sent a letter. I'm, I'm assuming he sent it to everybody and is hoping that you're going to do the proclamation, which basically says that, that you will recognize what they're doing. If you want to read it, it's a short one, and that you will further wear a red ribbon on the week of the Young Marine Program thing that they're doing.
Young Marine Program thing?
The thing.
So, I, I personally support the, I'm gonna say, I hate to make this, got the Marines thing in there as an Air Force guy, but I, I think that it's a great program.
My dad was both, so.
So.
I'm allowed to say it.
For those who don't know who Kiki Kimmarion was, he was a DEA agent. He was working in Mexico, and he was abducted and tortured over a period of weeks to death. That's who the, the award's named after, so.
I did not know that.
He was mentioned in Narcos, the Netflix series.
He's been mentioned, yeah, in a lot of those 80s-style, like, narco-terrorist movies, so, yeah.
Interesting.
So.
He wrote a great letter. I wholeheartedly support the Red Ribbon Week, and would think that this board would unanimously approve this motion to proclaim October 23rd to the 31st as the Red Ribbon Week.
Is that your motion?
It's my motion.
Now, second it.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Before we vote, shouldn't the chairman read that into the letter?
I was gonna say, it would be nice so that the public would know.
Or do you want me to read the letter in first?
I think the letter and the proclamation are, just the proclamation, I think.
The proclamation, because it has, the letter's long, but the proclamation has everything in it.
I'd be happy to do that. Allow me to read in the proclamation. It's a proclamation recognizing Red Ribbon Week, whereas Red Ribbon Week is a campaign to show support for ridding communities of illicit drug use and those that traffic and profit from illicit drugs. And whereas Red Ribbon Week will take place October 23rd to October 31st. And whereas the Natchog River Young Marines located in Dayville, Connecticut, along with the Young Marines from many surrounding towns, will actively participate in this nationally-recognized illicit drug awareness event. And whereas the Natchog River Young Marines proudly stand in support, proudly stand in support of and are committed to the fight against illegal drugs and those that promote their use. And whereas the Young Marines Program promotes good citizenship and healthy lifestyle through education and awareness, and the best way to educate is to lead by example. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas Board of Selectmen, that the Natchog River Young Marines should be recognized as an outstanding opportunity for our local youth and for their continuing efforts to educate and promote healthy drug-free lifestyle. And be it further proclaimed, that the Young Marine Program should receive the support, receive the support of the Douglas Board of Selectmen, as well as the residents of our town for their positive impact on our youth and community by wearing a red ribbon during Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week.
And what you read was what they gave me. I rewrote it.
Yes.
An proclamation on the.
And I can read the rewritten Suzanne Cain edited version. So, our version of pretty much the same thing is whereas Red Ribbon Week is a campaign to show support of ridding communities of illicit drug use and those that traffic and profit from illicit drugs. And whereas Red Ribbon Week will take place on October 23rd through October 31st. And whereas the Natchog River Young Marines located in Dayville, Connecticut, along with Young Marines from many surrounding towns, will actively participate in this nationally-recognized illicit drug awareness event. And whereas the Young Marine, Young Marine Program promotes good citizenship and a healthy lifestyle, is through education and awareness, and the best way to educate is to lead by example. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Douglas, that the Natchog River Young Marines should be recognized as an outstanding opportunity for our local youth and for their continuing efforts to educate and promote a healthy drug-free lifestyle. And be it further proclaimed, that the Young Marine Program should receive support of the Board of Selectmen and the residents of our town for their positive impact on our youth and our community by wearing a red ribbon during Red Ribbon Week, signed to the entire board, as of September 10th, 2019. And I do have a motion, and I believe it has been seconded.
I believe you are correct.
So, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, and I will mail it to them after you sign it.
Thank you. Now that I've read it twice, because that's always.
Who's in charge of bringing the red ribbons?
You.
I think you make your own.
All right.
I'm guessing, I don't know.
I will bring in some red ribbons for us.
Thank you.
In October.
All right. Request for a waiver on community bulletin board by Aaron Socrate and possible votes?
I don't see him here. He said he was going to come.
He's not here. You want me to table that?
Let's table it until a little later, maybe.
Wasn't it under time pressure?
It is, it's under time pressure.
The crux of the matter is, he would like to advertise the Apple Festival event that The crux of the matter is, he would like to advertise the Apple Festival event that will occur at his farm. There is a for-profit element to what he's doing. The town's informal policy, and I was unaware of it frankly until this came up, was that we advertise community events and nonprofits, but we have not, in the past, allowed for-profit entities to advertise on town, on the town message board out in front of the highway. So, it is town property. Under your purview, you can waive that policy if you choose to, or stick with it if you choose to.
I can wait for Mr. Socrate to come in, but I can tell you, I am not so inclined as to waive away from a policy that has been longstanding, be it formal or informal. And I would not be of the mindset to start offering for-profit events when primarily we've been offering that as a service to nonprofits. That's just my position.
And I would tend to agree with you, Kevin. I said, think it just sets a precedent. If we do that, we need to really look at changing the policy.
The floodgates would be open at that point, right?
Any thoughts, Tim?
No, I wouldn't be inclined to, to agree with everyone. I agree.
All right. So, we can, I mean, I don't really see a need to table it. I don't think that there's any real compelling argument that's going to make me change my mind on that. I don't know how you gentlemen feel.
I don't plan on changing my mind.
I would be, I'll put my own motion forward that we are denying said request. I would make a motion that the Board of Selectmen deny the request for public use advertising.
I'll second your motion, Kevin.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, we need to open the November 18th, 2019 special town meeting warrant and close the special town meeting warrant on September 27th, 2019 and possible votes.
Someone, someone.
I'm sorry.
I'll second.
All right.
I'll take your move.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded.
It has.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was easy. And now we go to approve minutes and possible votes.
So, I'll make the motion that we approve both the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes for August 20th, 2019, retaining the executive session minutes.
And I would second that timely and well-versed motion.
Motion was well-versed, made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You report, Mr. Wojcicki.
Mr. Chairman, this afternoon, I testified before the Joint Committee on Revenue at the State House, the invitation of Rep. McKenna, in support of two of his bills, House 2559 and 2560. The first of his two bills creates a commission to study the formula that's used to calculate pilot. That's our payment law of taxes from the state for those properties owned by the state. And the second, 2560, is a bill to assure the municipalities that the next year's pilot payment won't be any less than the prior years going forward. That's not a perfect formula. If you think about it, it could create an incentive for the state never to increase pilot, but it's a start. It's a start of a conversation that needs to occur. And it was very brief testimony, but I think we made our points. Both Rep. McKenna and I were able to get relevant points made in the three minutes we had to talk. My biggest, I, I think that the biggest part of my testimony was that of all the communities that are heavily forested and, you know, very much under state dominion, with 24% here in Douglas, purely in the state, there's diversity. And so, the pilot formula needs to take into account the diversity of the municipalities that are in this situation. I think people stereotype, not entirely incorrectly, they stereotype small towns out in the west and north of the Commonwealth are the places where all the forests are, and they're the ones that are, they're so small and they're just crying for money. But there are some pretty good-sized towns like Bourne and Sandwich that have very large state holdings. And they're not small. And then, of course, there's the town of Plymouth with 10,000 acres, but they have 58,000 people. But we all have diverse needs, and my point was Douglas for a small town is, is rather remarkable in that we have full-time public safety, both police and fire, and we have a freestanding school district, public school system, that many of the smaller towns don't have. So, our cost profile is very different. And the impact of land tied up and going into the state forest program over the long term is very constraining on a town that is growing and offering high-cost services. So, hopefully, that will be part of the discussion if the commission is formed. It was a favorable audience. You know, one of the leaders in trying to get us better pilot payments has been Senator Hines out of Pittsfield, because he represents a whole slew of tiny towns out there, and he's been active. He is the co-chair of the Joint Committee on Revenue. And there were others on the committee that had sponsored similar bills, so I'd be surprised if there wasn't a favorable report. Now, whether or not it'll go through the, at the assembly, I, I wouldn't predict. But we did make the point, as we've been asked here by this board and by the Finance Committee, to raise it and get some attention.
One quick question. Were there other municipalities there that gave testimony as well?
So, I didn't recognize anybody in the audience. It was a very long hearing, and they took us out of turn because we had a member, Rep. McKenna. So, what may have happened at 3:00 and 4:00, I don't know, if rural Commonwealth or anybody else showed up. I'd be surprised if they missed it because it's such a big issue for them. But they may have made the calculation to drive all the way out from Florida, Peru, or Royalston, or any other place like that.
Adams.
Yeah. Three, three and a half hours in traffic in Boston to testify for three minutes. They may have submitted written.
I'm pretty positive they were actually trying to move forward with the do-no-harm on the pilot program, because that was one of the big key things that Senator Fattman and Rep. McKenna had brought to us.
Well, our point was, you know, you want us to do five-year budget projections as a best practice, then help us lock in our revenue stream, at least so that it never falls below the floor.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because in the history of payments to the Town of Douglas, it's gone as high as 246 and as low as 196. That's $50,000 swing. And we really, for a little town like this, that's a lot of money, and we can't really sustain those, that kind of volatility. In the defense of the Commonwealth, over the four years, it's been very steady, to right around 206, 208. Secondly, grants. We've had an awful lot of grant activity. The town was awarded an MVP grant, it's municipal vulnerability preparedness, and is an initiative of the Baker Administration to identify town exposures to the impacts of climate change, global climate change. And we're not a seaside community, doesn't mean that we don't have issues that may arise. I don't want to dispute the science with anybody. It's irrelevant to me. What is important is the state is putting tremendous amount of resources behind this, the long-term infrastructure planning and things that we need to do anyway. And to the extent that we can retrofit and upgrade in anticipation of any sort of change, but it will positively affect us in our day-to-day operation without having to fund it through the taxpayer and the levy, I don't see a loss there. You're not subscribing to every policy pronouncement that's ever been put out, but you are participating in, in the program. And we launched today, we, we have an internal working group, just so everybody understands, we will have a workshop at some point where, you know, thoughts are put on the board, you brainstorm out the grid, and it's a typical planning exercise, I'm sure Selectman Bonin won't miss it.
You love planning.
Then there's a day-long, there's a day-long session, you know, a feedback session that is open to the public, and the idea is to try to get as many people to participate as The notion being that buy-in into the implementation of any action plan should be driven by the community and not just a small group of decision-makers. The grants could be awarded over a course of three years, so there's the, the engineering and design piece, then there's a couple of years of implementation, actual project funding. And some of the grants have been very large, so it's a worthwhile process to engage. It'd be March of next year before we're able to do anything. So, we'll be building this process through November. As for other grants, we were unsuccessful getting a small covert grant. We had an application for, to replace a covert. We're not entirely disappointed. We have a small bridge grant that we have to complete over in Cedar. And our covert project was solid, but it wasn't the strongest. It was a highly competitive grant. But we have been, I, I have very limited range of things I'm allowed to say. I don't want to endanger our relationship with, with the state granting authority, but we did participate in the Green Communities Competitive Grant Round, and there will be an announcement on September 17th that Douglas has been invited to, so I'm going to assume that that's good news for the town. We're still waiting to hear on a couple of other grants that we've applied for. The day-to-day activities of the town were solid while I was away. I was away on vacation. As we all know, we are continuing to send out messages to folks using Code Red about the triple E situation that we're spraying tonight, apparently. I don't know if they've actually confirmed that they're in the air or not, but thanks to, you know, the, the town has been, you know, people have had questions, have been calling, and I think the communication has worked well. We always learn. Every time we launch it, you know, we're looking for, how many connections are we getting? Are we making good use of our minutes? All of that stuff. But it's been an unusual year. There's now been two deaths in New England, so it's not a scaredy cat thing. It's, it's a real thing, and it's not a disease that anybody ever really wants to have to battle. So, that's my report, Mr. Chairman. I can go in a lot of detail about a lot of things, but I think that's the highlights.
Matt, just out of curiosity, has enrollment with Code Red boost, been boosted as a result of this? Do we know?
I don't know. I, I think, I don't have my phone with me. I can usually find out how many live connects. I think the last launch, we had something like 2,000 live connects. It was pretty solid. And remember, that's an account. It's not necessarily individuals. We're not looking for 80, 400 connects. We're looking for households to be reached. So, we might be really close to saturation. There are only a very small number that are timing out. I would say less than 10% or right around 10% of the calls are timing out, which means the line isn't picking up.
I think that between the Code Red and the social media pages, between the police and fire department, we did a very good job of getting the community informed and letting them know what was going on.
I like watching the little plane go over in real time and getting Facebook updates from every resident in town. I hope we can do that again.
It's always on the face, on the town website also.
So, I guess the last thing I would add, as you know, I put a, a column in every month in the Blackstone Valley Express and in the various publications that are sponsored by that. And this month, I wrote about the civilian emergency preparedness teams, assert teams. We need people to step up and help. The value of having civilians involved, being pre-trained, is what their roles would be. It's eyes and ears on the ground. It's a force multiplier. It allows first responders to be allocated to the crisis and not to support activities. It's an important part of what is missing in the Bahamas. If you look at the coverage, the hurricane was horrible, and we all know that. But when your first line of defense is itself disabled, because they're the victims of the storm as well, somebody has to step up and win public confidence and make sure that, one of the things that people are saying is, in the Bahamas, they're saying is, we don't see anybody organizing anything. So, there's a, that lack of confidence builds or supports, not panic, but irrational activity, and the whole recovery effort is, is severely undermined because there isn't the visible presence of an organized effort to, to cope with the situation. If that small island nation were a little bit better organized and they had thought this through and had people ready to go, they might be in a different situation with their citizenry than they are now. So, I would encourage people to reach out to Chief Vincent through the fire station. Chairman Morse is the civilian coordinator of the cert team, and you can reach him through the Board of Selectmen's office, through Suzanne, if you're interested. You don't have to be former military or law enforcement or anything. You just have to be of the mind that you would be able to help.
It's just a woman.
So, you have to be, you have to be prepared yourself, so you take care of your own household and release yourself to be of assistance in time of need. Right?
All set.
All right.
All right. So, I do have one thing under old business. It's, Selectman Bonin and myself were asked to sit in on a meeting from a couple of residents of Douglas that had a, what they feel less than positive interaction with our zoning board of appeals. I think it, based off of the opinions that they had brought to us and their tale of their experience with the, with the ZBA, myself and Mr. Bonin were willing to reach out and speak to a couple of members of the zoning board, which they didn't feel comfortable in having that meeting, and they opted to decline.
Just point out, and that's in compliance with open meetings law. It was just a and aye, and we were looking to talk.
Just sit down, hear both sides of the story and, and figure out what was going on, but based at the way the thing shook out, I think it would make sense that at our next meeting, this become a formal agenda item to where we can openly discuss, you know, what was brought to our attention, what we have for thoughts and processes on it, ask the residents to come in and share with the rest of the Board of Selectmen in an open forum, what their experience was, certainly giving opportunity to the ZBA members if they so choose to come in or sit there to explain their side of it. And depending on how things go off of that agenda item, there's a potential that there will be a hearing scheduled and a meeting subsequent to that one, based off of what the findings and general consensus of this board is. Based off of what I've heard and only hearing one part of it, I can say that I am disappointed, very disappointed in the, in the manner in which these residents claimed that they were being treated. And I, I think that we need to have the, have them in here to give their opportunity to explain their side of the story. And I think the rest of the board would benefit from hearing from both of these residents that had what they feel is a very negative experience with the town body. Speaking for myself, working with local government should be easy. I think that that's our responsibility, is to make it easy, or as easy as we can, without breaking any laws or rules. And if there's opportunities to where residents can work things out just by being good neighbors to one another, the town should wholeheartedly step back and support that. I think the most disturbing comment that I will share that came out of it is that Douglas has inherited a reputation of being difficult to work with, even for its residents. And not that I'm the ultimate authority in it, but my answer is standardly not on my watch. If there are department heads or departments or individuals that are either appointed or elected or working for the town, that are making it difficult for residents to conduct legal business or just do anything when it comes to an interaction, it's, in my opinion, you're not welcome to work here or represent the town in any way, shape, or form. It may get difficult, because it shouldn't be. I'm not a big believer in, you know, there should be anybody that's tied down or bogged down with a lot of process and the town getting in the way of progress. So, we're all here to work together and, and make things easy. At least, that's just my opinion. But just on the record, under old business and as the chairman being in charge of the agenda, I would like that to be the number-one agenda item in our next meeting, is the discussion regarding the ZBA and the interaction with these two residents. Does anybody else have anything under old business? Does anybody have anything under new business? Seeing is none. Does Mr. Bonin have one of his eloquent motions for us?
Sure do. I make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of possible litigation and real property, and then to leave that executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Motion? Motion has been made.
Been seconded.
And seconded.
I thought I heard one.
I was just trying to ignore him and give him a, give him an out. Roll call vote, please.
My cue, sir.
Bonin, aye.
Kevin Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye.